Okay, we're called a meeting to order. First item is invocation by Pastor Terrell Eldredth, First Southern Baptist Church. They'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Simon, our Student of the Month.
Let us pray. Our gracious Father, as we come before you this afternoon, we are reminded that we find ourselves right between Veterans' Day and Thanksgiving, reminded of what King David told us in the Book of Psalms. He said, "Give thanks to the Lord, for he is good; his love endures forever. Let the redeemed of the Lord say so." So Father, this evening, we want to say so. We want to say that you are good in all your ways, that your love continues to pour out into our lives, and that you have redeemed us through your Son. Father, this evening, we want to thank you. We want to thank you for your blessings that you pour out on our community. Thank you for the blessings that you pour out on those who serve here. But Father, in the midst of the blessing that you give, there are still those who find themselves hurting, as there always will be in communities. Like the 98-year-old woman who this evening is laying in the hospital, struggling for life and a little bit of physical comfort, while her son sits faithfully beside her, loving her through her last days. Or like the young mother that I discovered this afternoon, new to our community, away from any family and any friends, struggling now suddenly with two young children to make end meet with the holidays coming. Father, we pray that you continue to pour out your blessings to those who already experience it and to those who don't know that they experience it and need to. Father, we pray that you would make your will known. Father, we pray for those who are fighting, who are fighting fires in California, for those who are on the ground fighting the flames, for those who are first responders, for the chaplains that are there, for those who've been impacted by the loss of everything that they owned physically, for those who've lost loved ones in so many numbers. Father, we pray that your grace and your peace would rest upon those three communities, that your protection would be upon those who are needed right now. We thank you for those you provide in our community, for those who are first responders, for those who give and give and give. Thank you for our veterans who've given, many of them for years and years and years, many of them who gave the ultimate sacrifice. So Father, we thank you. We thank you that you are good in all you do, that your love never ends, and we want to say so this evening. Pray for wisdom for this council. We pray for unity, and we pray for hearts to come together as we look for ways to see the good that you have for our community, and ways that we can impact it, the ways that we can engage with it, and we'll give you glory and praise for all you're going to do. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
Of the United States of America-
And to the Republic of which this stands-
One nation, under God, indivisible, with its own justice-
Thank you, Simon. Okay, we move on next to roll call. Batama?
Councilmember Rick Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Marty Grossman?
I'm here.
Councilmember Mary Mallory?
Here.
Vice Mayor Laurel Linai?
Here.
Mayor Harvey Skook?
Present.
Councilmember Jordi Rooney?
Here.
Councilmember Michael Whiting?
Here.
We have a Coram Mayor.
Thank you, Batama. Okay, next we'll go to scheduled announcements and presentation. Healing Fields Awards and Appreciation. Is that you, Mary?
No, sir. We have Darlene, Sandy, Molly, coming up to the front. Good evening. We're here tonight to present awards to students who entered our third Healing Field Essay Contest, and we're very excited to acknowledge these students and some other members of the community. The first-place award for our Essay Contest is Casey Larkome. Is Casey here? Yeah, just stand right there. The second-place award goes to Devon McGregor. Devon? And our third-place award goes to Brandon Kane. These students are all from Bradshaw Mountain Middle School, Ms. Hamilton's class. Give them another round of applause. And now we have honorable mention. We have Madison Gray. And Megan Packer. Danica Roland. And Garrett Bush. These kids wrote amazing essays. Let's give them one more round of applause. And now we have just a, we have four more awards that are actually donations from the Healing Field to these organizations because of their community involvement. We want to show our appreciation for them. And the first one is the American Legion Post Six. And I don't think we have anyone here tonight, but let's give them a round of applause. The next one, the Central Arizona Honor Guard, and we all know what a wonderful job they do in this community. The next one is the Prescott Valley Police Foundation. Chief Gerald, I believe, is here. And last is the Yavapai Family Advocacy Center. Oh, and the next, we'd like to acknowledge Judith Andrews. Judith, are you here? She said she was going to be here tonight, but I don't see her. Judith is a teacher at Liberty Traditional School who has supported our Healing Field overwhelmingly, and she was actually our keynote speaker at the Patriot Celebration this year, did an amazing job, so let's give her a round of applause. And last, we'd like to acknowledge Mayor Skook. As you all know, this will be the last time he's at our Healing Field presentation, and he's been such a great support of the Healing Field and such dedication to this community, so let's give him one more round of applause. I think that's the end of our presentation. I know we have lots more to do with this council meeting. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you, all of you. I think this Healing Field is Mary Mallory's project, and it's sure grown and developed, and we appreciate that. Thank you so much. Okay, next item is Chamber of Commerce. Wait a minute. Student of the Month, Mr. Whiting. Are you up?
We're ready to go, buddy.
Well, this is not our fourth Thursday of the month. If you were counting, I don't know, but that's when we generally recognize a student in our community and as Student of the Month, and we have a lot of help in determining who that is primarily through Bradshaw Mountain High School and the Principal Court Minor. We appreciate his assistance in this, and this is something the Optimist Club of Yavapai County, Bradshaw Mountain High School, and the town of Prescott Valley, it's a way for us to recognize students in our community who do a lot of good things, not just academics necessarily, which is a good thing, but also community involvement, involvement in church and other things that we may not hear about otherwise. So we're glad we're able to do this. And tonight, we're honoring our outstanding Student of the Month for November, and that's Simon Stoll. That's this gentleman right here. And we believe that students like Simon exemplify a lot of the values at not only Optimist Club and Bradshaw Mountain High School and the town, but I think all of us as parents like to see students that are involved with their community, and definitely Simon has engaged himself not only in school but in the community as well. And the nomination is made, as I mentioned, as a collaborative effort through the staff and instructors at Bradshaw Mountain High School. So everybody, I think, at Bradshaw Mountain knows the students and know what kind of job they're doing. And I always get, as a tradition, some background to kind of give you an idea what he's done to earn this recognition tonight. So I'll give you a few things. I'll leave a little bit more academic stuff for Court to review, but it's usually something that the student writes down that he feels is important, it's like a resume or a biography. And so I'm going to go through this, and you'll get an idea. Again, I always like to say that when I was in high school, I never thought about the things that Simon has done throughout his career in high school. So I think it's something that we should appreciate. He's taken multiple honor classes, and a lot of these things you'll hear from other students that we recognize, so it becomes pretty much a consistent theme. But he is involved with honor classes in advanced placement, including world history, statistics, and biology. I think I just got a handle on statistics when I was getting my master's degree. Before then, it was just, didn't know what it was. He's a dual enrollment in classes, including pre-calculus and English, so obviously he likes math and does well. He is a marching band drum major since 2017, so I don't know if you're out to football games or otherwise, you see drum majors. And so he leads the band. He's Vice President of Finance for DECA, and DECA used to be known as Distributive Education. Now it's more a vehicle for leadership, emerging leaders in high school. So obviously, we look at Simon as one of those leaders. He's a member of the Scholastic Clay Target Program since 2014, which is something new to me. Maybe he can tell us a little about that. Part-time job in the community since 2017, so he's working in the community. Spent over 100 hours of volunteer service at Calvary Chapel, and spent over 60 hours of volunteer service with Scholastic Clay Target Program. So obviously, he's well entrenched in our community, and we appreciate that. He plans to attend Yavapai College, and in attending, they issue to study biochemistry. So he's done a lot in his four years at high school, probably more than I did in the first 30 years of my life, but that's the way it goes. So we're going to turn it over to Court Minor, the principal, and he'll give you a little consideration as far as academics.
Thank you, Mr. Whiting. Mayor Skook, Vice Mayor Linai, councilmembers, distinguished guests. My name is Court Minor, proud principal of Bradshaw Mountain High School. Mr. Whiting did a nice job of talking about some of the involvement that Simon has not only at the school but in the community. With all the band involvement, in case you guys know, marching band is an eighth period after school, which means there's no bells, so it can go forever. So those can be some long nights, but pop 'em back into school the next day by 7:45. But Simon has maintained a 3.60 GPA, and is currently ranked in the top 21% of his class. But as Mr. Whiting said, the student is nominated by our staff. He's not picked by me. He's nominated by our staff, and I think our staff once again has done a phenomenal job. We were fortunate this year to host our first-ever Bradshaw Mountain High School Band Festival, eight schools from Arizona, one school from Nevada, and that is a lot of people, and that is a lot of things, that is a lot of organization going on. And obviously, Ms. Grover, our band director, our athletic director, Tony Miller, they were in charge of making sure people got where they're supposed to in the warmups, and you have 11 minutes to be on the field, and there's all kinds of rules and regulations we have to follow. Following the Band Festival, which we did very well, I received a lot of phone calls and emails from band directors from around the state and Nevada, and some of the parents. And they were talking about the student with a mustache that was all over the place, was the most helpful person ever, was kind, was cordial, and Mr. Whiting said a bunch of things I can talk about, you know, him as a student on campus, but to me, you know, that's the ultimate. When students are out there portraying, you know, we talk about choosing excellence in our students' character and their academics and their extracurriculars, and to find a student actually out there doing it, representing Bradshaw Mountain High School, he didn't know anybody was going to call me, he was just being Simon. And once again, I think that's why our staff has not only just recognized him for his academics, for his involvement both at the school and the community, but he's just an outstanding student that represents the high school very well. So it's my pleasure to introduce to you guys Simon Stoll.
Hello. First thing I would like to thank the town of Prescott Valley for this award and the Optimist Club. I was told earlier a different club, and I was forsakenly wrong. My apologies. It was someone else. But being a drum major means a lot to me. It's the epitome of leadership. Like, think of the high school pyramid, and the band nerds are like down here, but it's okay, because I'm like up here, because I'm at the top of the band nerds, so it's not that bad. For DECA, I'm the Vice President of Finances, and that's just a lot of going to the library and making sure we don't have any surprise funds, like nobody decided to donate to us. Hint, hint. Picking up what I'm putting down. That's really all I've got to say. I really do want to thank all of my teachers, because I know I'm kind of a difficult person to be with in class. I have a 3.6, but I don't know if I deserve that 3.6. I'm just kind of, just kind of there, you know? I try to learn, I really do, but I'm not the best at learning. So thank you to everyone. Appreciate it.
What we'd like to do is give you a few mementos, but first, I think it'd be nice to introduce your parents, and if one of them would like to say something, that would be great, but you wouldn't be here without your parents. We know that, and so we really are thankful for your work with Simon, and obviously, Simon has taken that seriously, and he's done a lot, so come on up, please.
I want to see both of you up here. Come on. This is my mom and dad. This is Tracy and Tony Stoll. They are my parents, and I love them very much. They've helped me out so much through the years, and I can't put into words, or dinner, or birthday presents, or Christmas gifts, how much I need to repay my parents for everything they've done. It really means a lot to me. This is the part where we like hug and kiss.
There's no repayment, it's just what we do. As parents, everybody knows that. What I can say, what we deal with in the house is one thing. When we see him, that he doesn't know we're watching out on the field and stuff like that, we are so proud of the young man that he's become, so, and we know that he's going to be successful in whatever he does. It's a comfort to know that it's one thing that we don't have to worry about as parents, that he's going to be okay. That's what we have to say. So Simon, what we'd like to give you is just a certificate that kind of celebrates tonight, and it says, "Optimist Club of Yavapai County certifies to all that Simon Stoll is November Student of the Month." And again, it's a collaboration between the town, Bradshaw Mountain High School, and the Optimist Club, so display that in a prominent place. Then we want to give you a paperweight as you're going through all your math and chemistry and everything. You can put this on top of it so they don't scoot away. The Student of the Month, Optimist International. And as I always say, we hope to see you back in our community someday, contributing and making Prescott Valley a better place. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Simon. Good job. Keep up the good work. And parents, good job raising such a great young man. Don't give up. Hey, by the way, did you want your session at the microphone? Did you want your session at the microphone?
No.
Here, hold on, huh? Good, thank you. Okay, next is Chamber of Commerce. Brady, I believe you're up.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council, Vice Mayor. As we know, Prescott Valley is always growing. It, I don't think, ever stops growing 24/7. I work at the Chamber of Commerce. We have a pleasure of interacting with our business community, which is also always growing. We have a business here with us tonight. I would like to introduce Mike Grotto with Clear Choice Hearing Solutions.
Good evening, folks. Thank you, folks, for allowing me to come tonight, City Council, Mayor. My name is Mike Grotto, and I'm with Clear Choice Hearing Solutions. I offer treatment for hearing loss. You know, a hearing loss is one of those things that are least checked out as far as any kind of health concern, and it is a health concern, it should be treated as that. I've started this about, I got into this vocation about 11 years ago, and wasn't really sure if I wanted to continue, but as I saw results from people when they got hearing aids and how it changed their life and the excitement, and you would actually just see people cry from being able to hear sounds they haven't heard in many years, and that right there told me that it's something I needed to do where I could help and make a difference. At my clinic, we offer complete hearing evaluations, diagnostics, and treatment if hearing aids are needed. I follow all best practices to have complete results, to have treatment, to have complete and successful results. What I feel sets me apart from others in my career field, first is my personalization with the people coming in my office. I feel bringing them in and connecting with them, where they get the trust, is real important. We get that bond. Second of all, I believe my prices are a lot lower. And first of all is education. I try to really educate all those that come in, because a lot of them come in not knowing anything. They're scared, they're, because nobody comes in and says- anything, they're scared, they're, 'cause nobody comes in and says, "Hey, I'm here for hearing aids," but helping to realize that it's a need to improve their quality of life is, is real important. So, I go over everything from the beginning to the end as far as results and what could be happening if it's untreated, the consequences. I also offer services for those that have devices they've got somewhere else and have nowhere else to go. I also work with managed care companies that offer hearing aid benefits and also specialty molds for any of those that do shooting, swimming, music, anything like that. And awful, also at no cost, there are specialty phones for the hearing impaired called caption phones that us also offered for any of those that you may know. Just, I guess you can call my office, oh, it's over there. It's Clear Choice Hearing Solutions over Robert Roden Florentine. And thank you for this opportunity to share and thank you.
Well, I'm up here. The chamber would also like to invite Prescott Valley to join us at our Flying High Turkey Drive on Monday, November nineteenth. We are gonna be collecting turkeys from twelve till six and also the Valley of Lights opens Thanksgiving night next week. So, thank you very much.
I was listening to the radio yesterday and Prescott was bragging about how they were gonna get way more turkeys than we do.
Yeah, Laura Lee, I've heard we've been unofficially called out, so I expect each and every one of you out at Fry's Marketplace on Monday donating a turkey or other food items. Everything is kept local, all the food goes to our local Yavapai Food Bank, but we have been unofficially called out by Prescott, so.
Yeah.
The gauntlet has been throwed down, thrown down.
And Mary, you had a comment?
Oh, you know, I only, I wanted to say something in regards to your business, knowing that, knowing you when you worked over there at Sam's Club and what a professional you are, and I'm excited for you going forward and, and getting your new business started and I know that God's leading you in a good direction, so it's great to see you here tonight. The only thing I didn't know, if we got his phone number, he did say the address, but did we get a phone number?
We did not. Come back up here, Mike.
Well, you, you had said give you a call, so we...
Yeah, I did. Okay. You guys ready? Got your pen and papers? Phone?
Get ready.
All right. Nine-two-eight, which we know, eight-three-zero-nine-one-zero-one.
Thank you so much and the best to you. Thank you.
Congratulations, Mike. We got next is Citizens Academy and Ryan, I think you, you'll be calling people out?
I will be calling people out, as a matter of fact. I see, I see Alex is getting a twenty-five-year service award later on. He's gonna have to wait just a few more minutes before he gets that award. First of all, we are graduating our twenty-fifth class. Now, the Citizens Academy, that's XXV, if you like, uh, Roman numerology. There are thirty graduates in this class. Now, that brings our total over the past twelve years to six-hundred-and-fifty-nine residents that have gone through this program, so we would like to congratulate them and present them with their certificates. So, if you'd like to join me in the front here, we will start handing those out.
Will we recess after and...
That's your call. You're the mayor, you're running the meeting, so. We do have cookies over there, they've been dug into already, but I think there's a few left.
Okay, Ryan's gonna treat us. Council lets me down there.
First, we have Glenn and Judy Brower. A lot of these folks couldn't be here tonight, so I do not see Glenn and Judy right away. Yeah, you can applaud. Paula Burr, I don't think Paula's gonna be here either. Isabel's here, Isabel Salasetes. Come on up. Mitch? Mitch isn't here. Paula Deal. No Paula either. Jackie Vasaw. Jackie's here. I do not see Michelle out there either. Leanna and Terry Gale. Right here. No? Just kidding. Jaswa Gosensen. I do not see Jaswa either. We're not batting very well here. Leon Grabowski. No? It's a long walk here, down here. Leonard couldn't be here tonight, so he's to the side. Mary and Craig Hunter. There they are, right here in front. I think they had a perfect attendance during the class, right? All ten weeks, so congratulations. Kathy Carnes. Joanne Keller. I don't, don't see Joanne here either. Liz Kennedy is not gonna be here, I know that. Mary LaValle. Here she is. James and Renate Llewellyn. I don't think they're here. They're actually repeat attenders of the class. Didn't have enough punishment the first time, they took it two times. Dorothy and Edwin Maxwell. No? Gloria Mitchell? No? Jay and PJ Parker? There we go.
Way to go, congratulations.
Debbie? Well, next person's here, I know, Lindsey. Quisenberry or Link, right? Did you go by? Lindsey is a volunteer, serves on Arts and Culture Commission, so thank you, Link, for Steve Zalinski. No, Steve, and last but not least, Janet Zazueta. That's it, Pierce?
Well, now, we're gonna break for a short recess, so I think, I know Ryan's got all kinds of treats. We start out with certificates. First certificate, appreciation of, to Di Anderson for five years of service. Can we meet you up here, Di? You're really in luck. Fatima?
Yes. We are grateful and privileged to have someone of Di Anderson's caliber working for us. While Di has been in the town's employ for five years, she only came to the town clerk's office two years ago. She brought many talents to the table from her diverse employment positions in the military, from owning her own successful businesses, from work in the judicial system and work in local government. Di bubbles with enthusiasm, energy and dedication to her job and her life. Her office skills and people's skills are everything an employer could ask for. Those talents are obvious in her application of them in everyday work in the town clerk's office. As the town's records manager, she has put her organizational skills to use by restructuring the records management filing system to increase efficiency while upholding the state laws. She has innate abilities to encourage growth and strengthen others as she shares her wisdom and knowledge with her mentoring and leadership skills. Di is always thinking about ways we can improve processes, then willingly takes the leadership role to mo, to move the init, I'm sorry, takes the leadership role to move the initiative forward to successful completion. In her personal life, Di shows continued devoted strength and faithful willingness to help others. She has mentored over fifteen teenage girls from all different backgrounds. She willingly gives of herself to usher them onto a successful path of life. She remains active in her church and the community while always thinking of others prior to herself. Di brings a smile to our faces every day. Thank you, Di, for being you and for everything you have brought, not only to the town clerk's office, but the, but to the town of Prescott Valley over the past years. From Diane.
Vice mayor, comments?
Oh, Di, come over here. You know, we have a lot of unsung heroes in the building here, the building next door and in the police department. I want you to know that I consider you one of those and we are so blooming lucky to have you as part of our family. Thank you.
Mary?
Well, I'm looking for at least another twenty years going forward and we have a great cheering squad out here for you and they're rooting for twenty more years. I know they are, so I appreciate yours. So, thank you so much.
Rick? Well, I know that Diane sets the bar high, so with her good words, you, you're doing very well, so thank you very much for your five years and we look forward to many more. Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, I'm surprised, Di, that it's been five years. It seems so much longer, you know? No, but I see you everywhere, so you are one of the faces, the great faces of Prescott Valley, so we appreciate everything you do. Congratulations on your five years and wish you another five at least.
Marty?
Yeah, uh, okay, five years, even though you haven't been there that long, you've certainly made a, a big impact on the operations of the town and how things work and you're continually working in, you know, to improve the system that we have here. I know Harvey, Laura Lee and all the other council members, whenever we are out of the community and we're in other communities, we are always bragging about how great our staff is and you're just another example of one of those, so thank you.
Jody?
Di, thank you for your service. Man, you know, I just see, five years does go really quick, yeah, and Marty's right, you have already made such an impact. Thank you. And you know, one thing that you do that's real important to me is mentoring. I really appreciate that, that means something to me and I know Ivan's still mentoring Larry, you know, but...
That'll be forever.
Maybe you can help him out, so.
See, that's another, Di, that's another twenty years, right? I know it is.
Do you have anything to say in your defense?
Well, you know, I really enjoy working for Diane and the town clerk's office and our team with Fatima and Heather. We are a young team together, but Diane has really made us a cohesive group. We enjoy our working together and our team spirit and the fact that we wanna just help each other to make our department even better every day.
And I think Laura has a, another comment or so?
Well, I think it's time that we gave you the certificate of appreciation, presented in appreciation for five years of dedicated service to the town of Prescott Valley, November twenty-seventh, twenty thirteen through November twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen. And there's somebody behind us that has all something and then I'll give this last one.
I'll take chocolate any day.
Heather, Heather, did you have a comment?
Di and I share a big office space and we love to get to know one another, maybe a little too chatty, but that's all right. We have a great time together and Di definitely is a great mentor for me. Being newer to the town, she's opened up her arms to me and taught me everything she knows from personal finance to work in the environment, that, uh, the town clerk's office and everything that I need to know for my job, so I just wanna say thank you for Di and all her hard work.
Fatima, did you have any other comments?
Well, I ended up writing my own speech for her, 'cause I wasn't sure if I was gonna get something. I'll just read one paragraph. "I met Di when we both worked for the court. She was more than a supervisor, she has always been my mentor. Not only did she hire me, train me and guided me, but she always supported me and given me advice."
Don't cry.
Because of people like her is the reason why I like my job.
Di, thank you for your service. Okay, we have one more presentation and it's gonna be a special one.
Thank you. I'll reach out for this one.
You'll reach out for that. And many more years, Di.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work, all of you.
It's always my pleasure working with you.
Well, what a great staff. We're really proud of you. Thank you so much.
One thing I wanted to say, I don't know if the other departments can even come close to what we do, but you need to know that we, our department, we are fifty percent military, active duty or veteran.
Do we have the energy for this?
Do we have the energy for this?
Oh, my goodness.
Alex Romero.
Yes, that's a good idea.
Norm, did you have a comments? Come on, oh, she's got him.
You notice how they photoshopped that picture? Make it look better.
Fatima, I've been told you have the comments.
If the rest of you haven't figured it out, and those at home on their couches, this is the lively, fun ones.
And Norm is real microphone shy. Norm, you're up. He forgot his comments. Here he comes. I'm gonna have Fatima read them. Okay, Fatima?
The Public Works... Ready? The Public Works Department is pleased to recognize Alex Romero for his twenty-five years of service to residents of Prescott Valley. Alex is a longtime area resident himself with a very large extended family network in the area. Alex spent his schooling years here attending Humboldt Schools and Brechamun High School. Just about everybody knows Alex and his fun-loving attitude and the personal relationships he has built over the years. Alex began his career in the public works as a laborer in the streets department, and is shining example of hard work and dedication to building his skill set to take advantage of the best advancement opportunities with the town. This includes moving through the streets department, ranks to lead equipment operator, then construction inspection, then into supervisory roles to his current position as operations manager, overseeing all the streets, facilities, and fleet divisions. Alex has done it all and has had its hands into the many successful in-house projects in helping guide the construction work, growth of the town infrastructure over the years. Alex also boasts that he's the best blade operator in the town and can finish concrete with the best of them.
Who paid her to say that?
Outside of work, Alex is stodding father to teenage son Eddie and daughter Ally. Alex is also quite an accomplished musician and plays the drums. He's talented enough drummer to play all kinds of music, to include rock, country, and western, reggae, blues, and even play hip-hop. We congratulate Alex for his twenty-five years of service and dedicating his talents to delivering the town's public work services.
Where's the bell? Ring the bell. Got to use the microphone.
This ain't the first time he trained or was here to try to get a job. We'd had to do, he had to do a driving test. He got in a truck, and I was with him. He took off, and he dumped the driveline out of the truck, so... We still hired him, I'm not sure.
But he's not telling you the whole story. He worked on that dumb truck saying, "Oh, it worked just fine," you know? And when we got, when I said, "Bruce, I come up moving this truck," he says, "Well, I don't know, maybe you don't know how to put it in gear." So he went underneath, and the driveline was completely on the ground. So, it's his fault, not mine.
I just want to thank everybody for coming and appreciating Alex's hard work, as we do at home. And, you know, when you gotta kick 'em, kick 'em. I gotta do the same thing. But thank you for everybody that rallies behind him and supports him.
Introduce my family. Here's Debbie Rodriguez, her daughter, yeah, Caliska. Sorry. My daughter Ally, right here, and my son Eddie.
Alex, we go way back, don't we?
Yes, we do.
And guess what, guys? Back here, you're gonna love this. I talked him into doing a radio show with me next week. Do you have any idea how hard that was?
It was really easy. You just called.
He demurred, but I knew it wasn't the real Alex, so... Alex, I could go on and on, and we're just not gonna do that. Never stop being you.
I never will.
Rick?
Well, alls I have to say is, Alex, when I first started here with town a little over seventeen years ago, I was an inspector, new to the town and didn't really know the ins and outs of how the operation worked up here. And Alex definitely took me under his wing and showed me the ropes and introduced me to the right people, and he made my job a lot easier. And me and him been working together for, ever since seventeen years, we were inspectors together, and he got promoted to maintenance tech. And then I got down to the streets department as supervisor down there, and the downturn, he actually worked for me for a little while. And now I work for him, and it's payback.
I told him that, too.
Boy, that explains a lot.
Couldn't work for a greater guy.
Grosseman Anderson? I think we ought to hear from some more of his workers. Who else wants to comment?
He's old enough he won't remember what you said in the morning.
Have to use the microphone, Rick. I said Alex is old enough that he won't remember what you said in the morning anyway, so say what you want to now. Larry?
Yes, Mayor, and this is directed to the crew. You guys didn't really appreciate how much of a wimp Alex can be. When he was first hired, he was hired away from Lake Havasu City. And he came to work here in Prescott Valley, and he was always complaining about how cold it was here in Prescott Valley. Now, after coming from Lake Havasu, you can understand that. But we couldn't understand why he wore long underwear the first twelve months he was here. In other words, through the summertime, he was doing that. So you just keep that in mind, guys.
Okay, Anderson, you're next.
Alex, I just want to thank you for all the hard work that you do, and it's obvious by the fact that you have this entire group with you here. I know they hang together through thick and thin, but to see him here honoring you tonight is a testament to the hard work that everybody does in that crew. So, thank you all for being here tonight, for honoring Alex, and Alex, thank you for the hard work you put in with this town. We do appreciate it.
Grossman?
Alex, twenty-five years, that's awesome. And I know that you love coming to work every day. I mean, look at the guys you have to work with, or tolerate.
You have to work with.
I know Alex is actually very humble. He would rather be up there talking about one of the other guys than have all of us talk about him. He's just that kind of person. I'm also one of the lucky ones who has actually seen Alex perform with his band on the drums, and he is, he is awesome, let me tell you. So, you know, congratulations, twenty-five years. I don't know how much longer we're gonna have you, but for as many years as we do have you in the future, we're gonna really, we really do appreciate you for what you do and the amount of knowledge that you pass on to the crew so that we have a nice succession after you. So, thank you.
Rooney?
Alex, I remember seeing you and thinking, "You know, I wonder if Alex thought ever that parades would be in your job description." Well, you do it with a smile, and you do the rest of your work with a smile, along with your crew here. These guys are awesome. And you know what? If you hang around long enough, we'll probably all be working for you.
Whiting?
Hi, Alex. Congratulations. I had no clue that you've been here twenty-five years. You're so young, you know, it's just hard to believe. I wonder if sometimes you change the paperwork to, you know, elevate your situation, but we know you haven't. You've been a hard worker here for many years, earned every minute and year that you've been here, and we appreciate that for sure. And I do remember, you know, I think with the Rotary, we were doing the balloon fest, and I know several years at least I can remember we were doing that. You were there with your crew, upright and early, probably around four or so, and we appreciate that. But it's just kind of a testament to the things that you're willing to do. You've heard, you know, parades and other things that are probably not in the job description, but you know you're gonna be doing them. So we appreciate all your hard work. Congratulations, twenty-five years. I salute you.
Mallory?
Well, Alex, I so appreciate you, and you've just been, you're an amazing man, you know? And I just want Councilman Grossman to know that I also, Kirk and I, have been to some of your bands and party-type things that you have ventured into, and we've had a great time. And you are a jewel to this town. Appreciate you so much. And these guys here, they, their whole attitude, that's because of you. You rock. You're great. Thank you.
Alex, anything on your, defense on your behalf, like fixing differentials or whatever you did?
Yeah, like making Bruce a better mechanic? I think he's already one. No, all I can say is, back in 1993, when I started this job, I heard a voice telling me, "Are you ready to go to work?" And that was Mr. Tarkowski there. Well, I kind of got scared. I go, you know, I'm working for Lake Havasu City. Prescott Valley was dust, you know, just a beginning to beat Prescott Valley. And I thought, you know, I'm gonna thrive here, and I have. And I'm really grateful for the opportunity that this town, Town Council, Larry, and everybody else, Neil, a lot of people that I know that have given me the opportunity to become a, you know, a laborer, a heavy equipment operator, an inspector, an engineering technician, now as an operations manager. I hope these young guys here behind me understand there's always room for growth. And that's what we do. Now, these guys that we have back here are handpicked, and they're handpicked by me, Mr. Davis, and Greg. And I think we've done a great job handpicking these guys. They're hard workers. They're a whole generation of what I came from before. They were hard workers also. And the other guys I'm talking about is Shane Markley, Bruce has been here the whole time, Larry, and Charlie Miller, and all the other group that was here that have now retired or passed away. Here I am, still hanging in with these guys. But the town has done great for me, and the support that I've always had from the Town Council, from you, Mayor, and from Larry Tarkowski, to Mr. Norm Davis, to just my group, I really, really appreciate all that. I mean, it's just a wonderful group that we have. I mean, I'm talking Jason, Ron, Larry Prentice, you know, all these people here supporting me, because, you know, we all work together. Mr. Crowe back there, I know that, and Patty, and, you know, and all them, her husband, John. And I had Josh here, but he had to go pick up some kids, which is understandable. But all I'm saying is I appreciate the town of Prescott Valley. It's been a pleasure working for them. This is my town.
I don't know what you did, but Larry lost his hair.
It just got old.
It is your night, but do any of these guys string lights every year? Thank you. Back here, do you know what I'm talking about? They turn us into a magic Christmas village. And when I walk in and see them, I try to say thank you wherever they are. So now I'd like all of us to give them a hand and say thank you. I knew you wouldn't mind. In appreciation, to Alexandre Romero, for twenty-five years of outstanding and dedicated service to the town of Prescott Valley, November 1993 through November 2018. Hurrah!
We also have a Christmas shopping bonus for you. You enjoy... They're all a part of it. Thank you so much, Alex, and congratulations. Another twenty-five years. Oh, Heidi wants to take a picture of you, too. Can you do it, Heidi?
Hey, where's the sign?
He likes to hide.
There you go. That works. We'll take two pictures.
But then again, neither will you. No, I didn't. I looked a lot worse twenty-five years ago. I look a lot better now.
Say pookie.
Turn the sign around. You're fired.
Next, we have council comments or communications. Anyone in the council got it? Marty?
I'll just wait a minute for it to quiet down a little. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I recently received some information. We are going to have a youth citizen police academy during the winter break in January. I know I had given Mark one, but if he doesn't have it, this is basically what the flyer looks like. It should be available on the town website. What's gonna happen is, from January 2nd to the 5th, they're gonna have four days between 8:00 and 3:00 for students to go through the Citizens Youth Academy. Right now, it's only limited to fifteen spots, and I'm sure that they'll do with this one that, like Ryan does for the Citizens Academy, where after the first fifteen sign up, we'll start a waitlist for the next one. And if there's a good enough response, we know there's gonna be a next one. In addition to that, we are asking people, members of the community, the business community, and anybody who wants to contribute, they're looking for snacks and other contributions to, so that the students could go for free and be fed. They're looking, so they have enough for twenty-five people, because there are gonna be instructors that also need to be fed. It's gonna be a full day there. So, if you have, if you need any more information, you could contact Jody Mullins or James Riesinger. The phone number there is 772-5166. Jody's email is jmullins@pvaz.net, and James is jriesinger@pvaz.net. Like I said, the information should be on the Prescott Valley website. Chief, Deputy Chief, do you have any information you want to add to it? Okay, so, you know, and if you can't reach them, reach me, and I'll give you the information you need. I could always email it to you. So, thank you, and it should be fun. It's gonna be interesting to see how the kids turn out from this and what they get from it. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Any other? Jody?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of announcements. Just wanted to inform folks who are looking in by their TV tonight that we are at our library opening up Sunday hours. And so I think that's a fabulous thing. One thing we're looking for also is input. It's a community survey to help us plan future library services. And the way to get to that is right on the front page of the library website. Easy. You can just Google Prescott Valley. You can just Google Prescott Valley Library, or go to the link, pvlib.net. Also, what's going to be happening on November 30th is our parade. I know Mayor, at 6:00 PM, you're going to give the signal to turn on the lights here at the Civic Center. Vice Mayor was just talking about it. You know, our staff has put up wonderful lights. It's going to be fabulous, spectacular in fact. And at 6:10, we're going to have the annual Nightlight Parade to begin, and I'm looking forward to that. And you know what we will have here in the town? We have our ruby slipper from the 40th anniversary. And this particular year in the light parade, we're going to be having our council-elect and mayor-elect in that parade. In fact, we've got a couple people in the audience tonight. We've got council-elect, there is, we've got Kendall Schumacher and council-elect, there's Don Packard sitting out there, and I know Mayor-elect was, Cal Palgood was with us earlier this evening. So we're looking forward to seeing you all in the parade. Everybody come on out.
Any other? Marty?
Yeah, just quick. I know Brady was here earlier, and he was talking about the Valley of Lights, which opens Thanksgiving Eve. The first Tuesday after Thanksgiving, which I believe is the 27th, they're having a stroll through the Valley of Lights, where you get an opportunity to walk through the Valley of Lights rather than drive through it. It gives you a great opportunity to get up close and personal with all the exhibits, get to read the signs of those who donated them. They usually have carolers along the way, they'll be having hot chocolate. The, I know they did it last year, I don't know if they're going to do it this year, but the chapel is usually open? Will it be? Okay. Okay, so the chapel will be open, and if you haven't visited that, that's, that's an awesome thing to go check out. Beware, it will be very, very crowded out there, so if you want to see everything, get there early. You have to...
Warm.
Yeah, and dress warm. So you will have to park up on Second Street and walk down to Fane Park and through the Valley of Lights, and if you haven't done it, it's really a lot of fun. So I know I have a group of 20 people going through. So that's going to be interesting to corral us all, so it'd be like herding cats. So, anyway.
Good. Any other comments? Anyone? Mary?
No, sir.
If there's no other comments, then we move on to the consent agenda, and tonight there'll be Marty that'll be reading the consent agenda.
Whoopie! Consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered routine by the Town Council, and we will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. A, approving monthly reports. B, accounts payable. C, quarterly sales tax report. D, change order number one for Arizona Furnishings in the amount of $24,348.14. E, accepting one easement for the Viewpoint Spouse Intersection Improvement Project, CIP number S168.2. F, approving agreement number 2018SVWX003 with the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Community Oriented Policing Services, and accepting the grant award of $121,583. That concludes the consent agenda items.
Do you want to, anyone want to pull an item, or do you want to approve it as a, as a whole, as read?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as a whole, by electronic vote.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second the motion.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you set the vote there? Palma?
Yes.
It passes, or does it?
Yes. Yes.
Vice Mayor Laurel Leenight? Yes. That passes.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll move on to number nine, new business for review, comment, and/or possible action. Number A is consideration of appointing Darrell Carpenter to the Municipal Property Corporation. Laura, you have any comments?
I do, Mayor. Is Mr. Carpenter here?
No.
It's a renewal, so I wasn't sure, but I didn't want to not honor him if he was here. On November 18th, 2018, Darrell Carpenter's term on the Municipal Property Corporation Board will come due for a renewal. He submitted a renewal application letter choosing to be reappointed. Darrell Carpenter was first appointed to a partial term on this board on February 22nd, 2018, and this reappointment will be his second consecutive term. Myself, Councilmembers Anderson and Grossman are recommending the reappointment of Darrell Carpenter for a term with a renewal date of November 18th, 2021.
Any other comments or motions? Or commotions, or demotions, or promotions?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
To reappoint Darrell Carpenter to the Municipal Property Corporation, to Municipal Property Corporation Board, to a term with a renewal date of November 18th, 2021, by electronic vote.
And I'll second that, Mayor.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you set the vote? Palma?
Councilmember Mike Whiting?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, and congratulations to Mr. Carpenter. Okay, the next two items, I'm going to defer to our Vice Mayor, and I'll step down a little bit.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item B is a public hearing regarding the Civic Center renaming to Skoug Boulevard. Before we make any comments, do we have any citizens who wish to come up and comment? Hearing none, I will open it to any questions or comment from our council.
Vice Mayor, I think we said everything we needed to say the other night.
There is a couple things I'd like to say. I know some of us have reached, received texts or phone calls for citizens that were I think we need to take this moment to educate and let them know that we are fiscally conservative, and this situation is no different. In regards to all our business cards, our stationery, we will not be throwing that away. We will be utilizing it until it's gone and replacing them only when we need to. And that was some of the concerns for citizens. Larry, is there anything else we can say to reassure the few citizens that had concerns?
Vice Mayor, I have. Yeah, there was, there was a comment in the paper, something I was teasing them about, saying it's going to mess up the post office, and being a retired letter carrier, it was just an inside joke for me. I have dealt with name changes in New York City, when we, when we had a name change and how the postal service handles it. Basically, what they do is they plug in both names, and for at least 10 or 15 years, both names will still be listed, so that when it comes through, it will still get to the, to the proper address and buildings. So there's no, you know, there's no problem with that. And we also did check with the, with the high school. You're going to...
I was going to mention that. The other thing that I received concerns about was that we were being considerate to our agricultural and equine school. They're very willing partners and want to be a part of this, gifts and commemoration. So I just wanted to assure those citizens that had that concern, that we brought them in, they're partners, and we're very proud of them for joining us and supporting us in this endeavor. So if there's no other comments from ourselves or the audience, I will close the public hearing, and I will move it on to item C, consideration to authorize the mayor, or in his absence, the Vice Mayor, to sign Resolution Number 2077 approving the renaming of the Civic Center to Skoug Boulevard. So since we ran out of comments, I will accept a motion in a second.
Madam Vice Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion to authorize the mayor, in his absence, the Vice Mayor, to sign Resolution Number 2077 approving the renaming of Civic Circle to Skoug Boulevard.
And I'll be happy to second that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mike Whiting?
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
Thank you. As uncomfortable as this is for you, Mayor Skoug, it is done, and we're going to love it.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Laura. And she's going to sign the documents, not me. We'll move on to D, consideration of authorizing the mayor to sign Resolutions Number 2078 adopting and approving a final development plan, FDP 18-014 for Glassford Hill Marketplace. And that would be, Joe, are you up?
Thank you, Mayor, and congratulations, and council. Again, this is a request for final development plan for development of private roadways and infrastructure to support development of the Marketplace Village, comprising 65,000 and 90,000 square feet of building floor area, which would be distributed across five parcels for office and commercial uses, and approximately 12 acres. The property was originally zoned to C2PAD in 2006, with a plumbing development plan for a commercial center comprising approximately 140,000 square feet of retail space. At the time, a traffic study was done in 2006 to support the marketplace north of Florentine, including Kohl's, Kmart, and this site, and recommended roadway improvements that have since been completed. A new traffic was done that was specific to the development proposal, and has been reviewed and approved by the town engineer. Vehicle access to Marketplace Village would be provided at three points along Glassford Hill Road. Access will be provided at the existing singleized intersection at Glassford Hill Road and Lake The final development plan approves the circulation and density ranges for the subject 12 acres in conformance with the approved 2006 plumbing development plan. Screening and buffering to the adjacent residential neighborhood is already in place, and no vehicular access is provided to the adjacent residential areas. Subsequent final development plans will be approved for specific building configurations and uses in conformance with approved circulation densities recommended by the traffic study. It's my understanding that a car wash is being proposed as one of the first developments, which probably come forward as a final development plan. I'm ready for any questions. I know there are representatives of the property owners of the Fane Group that are available in the audience, too.
Good. Any comments, questions?
A question. Joe, could you give us a little idea? I'm so delighted you mentioned the screening, you know, to protect the neighborhood. Could you tell us a little bit more about that screening?
That was put in place along Pineview Drive. We have the screen wall, and that was done with the approval of the plumbing development plans and final development plans, as you recall, back when Walmart and stuff was done, and that was part of the requirement for that screening.
Thank you for that. It's important that our residents know that we do care about our residents, and we look after them.
No additional traffic going through those neighborhoods.
Yes, thank you. Well done, Joe.
Other questions or comments? Anyone? Mike?
Yeah, I was just going to mention, this is a final development plan, so it has gone through the necessary steps in terms of P and Z, and in our 2025 general plan, so it's something I look forward to seeing come about, so I'm very supportive of that.
Anyone else? Comments?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion.
Okay.
Make a motion authorizing the mayor to sign Resolution Number 2078 adopting and approving a final development plan, FDP 18-014 for Glassford Hill Marketplace Village.
I'll second that.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you set the vote?
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, we move on to number E, consideration of approving award of construction contract to the lowest responsive bidder, Earth Resources Corporation, LLC, in the amount of $271,017 for the North Plains Recharge Basin Project, Basin Number 11B and 12B, CIP Number W343. John, you are up.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. We talked about this last week at work, studied to some extent. Just as a reminder for those who might be at home, this is to build two additional recharge basins at our North Plains facility to return full operational capacity to that facility, because Basins 2A and 3A can seldom be used due to high water tables caused by So we put this out to bid, had six responsive bidders, and as you noted, staff recommend award to bid to the low-responsive bidder, Earth Resources Corporation. I'll address any questions you might have.
Questions, anyone? Comments? I think we've studied this. Laura?
We ready for a motion?
I think we are. We've studied this pretty much.
Motion to approve award of a construction contract to the lowest responsive bidder, Earth Resources Corporation, LLC, in an amount of $271,117 for the North Plains Recharge Basin Project, Basins 11B and 12B, CIP W343, as outlined in the fiscal analysis.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have the motion and a second. Would you set the vote?
Councilmember Whiting? That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you. Good job, John. Appreciate that. Okay, we move on to number F, consideration of approving amendment number one to the professional services agreement with Civil Tech Engineering Incorporated in the amount of $513,990 for construction period services for the Legend Larry Well Project. Neil, you are up.
Good evening, Mayor and council. So I know we've talked about this a number of times, and you previously approved a contract with Civil Tech Engineering for the design services related to equipping the Legend Larry Well, and we are now going out to bid for the, the construction of that project, but we do need to do an amendment to Civil Tech's contract for them to do the construction management or the construction period services, which includes them doing site inspections, reviewing submittals from the contractor, and approving the, the equipment that they're proposing, and all the things that go along with a construction project. And that is in the amount of $13,990.
Good. Any questions, comments? Marty?
We're ready. I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve amendment number one to the professional services agreement with Civil Tech Engineering Incorporated in the amount of $13,990 for construction period services for the Legend Larry Well Project, CIP Number W438, by electronic and voice vote.
I'll second.
Okay, we have the motion and a second. Do you set the vote?
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, and good job again, Neil. Okay, we move on to number G, consideration of approving amendment number two to the professional services agreement with Southwest Groundwater Consultants in an amount not to exceed $100,000 for the Long Shot Well Project, and approval of the associated budget adjustment. Neil?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So again, we've been working on this well for a while. This is the well that has the issue with high arsenic, and we've been doing a number of things to try to rehabilitate this well and make it usable again. Essentially, where we are right now is that we need to get in there and clean out the bottom of the well. The bottom of the well has caved in. Essentially, we've lost about 150 foot of the bottom of the well. And so when we look at the other wells that are out in that area compared to this one, the biggest changes we've seen is that, you know, we've lost the bottom 150 feet, which is the most prolific water-bearing zone of the well. And so potentially, we are not only getting less water out of it, but also we are taking the water from the areas where we have the higher arsenic. So we believe by reestablishing this well to the original depth, and what we So we believe by reestablishing this well to the original depth and what we would do, we would drill it out and then we would install a smaller diameter casing. So we've got, you know, like a twelve inch diameter casing at the top or a sixteen inch. We put a slightly smaller one in and we lower that all the way down to the bottom so that we prevent it from caving in in the future. Basically reestablishing the full water bearing zone of the well and then hopefully that'll solve the arsenic issue for us. You know, the one caveat is we don't know if this will solve it, but we believe this is our best shot at restoring the well to full capacity and being under the ten part per billion arsenic limit. So with the proposal that you've got in front of you from Southwest Groundwater, it's for a little bit over eighty thousand dollars. But when they gave it to us, there was still a little bit of uncertainty and they may encounter other issues as they're moving forward. So what we were proposing was just to approve it for an amount not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars. And as they move forward, you know, if any changes or anything else needs to get done, we'll have a little bit of flexibility in completing this project.
I like that that prepares or might not have to do change orders.
Good, I appreciate that. Any other comments, questions? Mike?
Yeah, I just want to confirm. You said it was a prolific well. It's one of the higher producing wells. Did you mean?
It's an average well for us, but average means it's five hundred gallons a minute. And so, you know, the biggest issue is that five hundred gallons a minute, that's a lot of water and if we can't use it because of the arsenic, we really need, you know, it'd be nice to get that well back online. We're about to drill two new wells in the system, as you're both or you're all well aware. But doing that is going to end up costing us, you know, potentially a million dollars apiece for each one of those wells. And so we've spent a little bit of money in trying to get this long shot well back and a hundred thousand dollars, if we can do it for that price, it would be a bargain.
Mighty?
Yeah, thank you. Has this been done in other areas and has this company done it and what's the success rate?
Well, they have drilled out wells that have caved in before and that's really all we're doing. Whether or not that will reestablish and make it to where the arsenic issue is resolved, we don't know because every well is different. And we believe that what's causing this is just the blocking off of the more prolific water bearing zones to where the higher arsenic zones are having a greater impact on the well. So in terms of the work they're gonna do, it's done all the time. Whether or not this is the solution to the arsenic issue, that's what we believe and we're gonna find out.
So the, basically, once we, if we could get it to the full flow that it was before the cave-in, it could easily flush out the amount of arsenic that was affecting our readings, correct?
That's correct.
I just wanted to make sure the public knows that.
Good. Any other comments or questions?
You used the word high arsenic, but in the conversations we used to have before, it wasn't tremendously high, is it?
No, anything over ten parts per billion, we cannot serve to the public. So that, anything over ten, I call high.
Okay.
I believe the numbers we were talking about is somewhere around seventeen is kind of the numbers we've seen. Most of our other wells produce, you know, between five and seven parts per billion of arsenic, which is below the limit of ten parts per billion.
Okay. Well, whatever it takes, we need to definitely get this issue resolved. Thank you.
Laura?
Anytime we mention arsenic in connection with water, we have citizens that get anxious. And I just want to assure you, we don't normally have this problem. And this problem is fixable and I don't want anybody getting nervous and anxious out there about turning their faucets on. Do you have any comment about that?
Well, anywhere you go, particularly in the southwest United States, when you're drinking groundwater, there will be arsenic in it. And so the federal government has a standard for the maximum amount and that number, as I mentioned, is ten parts per billion. And if you exceed that amount, then you're looking at costly options for solving that problem. You either take the arsenic out, which is very expensive, or you find ways to dilute it down with other sources, but it, no matter what you do, it's gonna cost money. So yeah, arsenic is naturally occurring compound in the groundwater. And like I say, normally, it's less than ten parts per billion in our system and that's what we're trying to get this well back to so that we do meet all federal and state permit levels.
Rick? Any other comments? Motion, demotions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion
Okay.
to approve amendment number two to the professional service agreement with Southwest Groundwater Consultants in the amount of not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars for the long shot well project and approval of the associated budget adjustment.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Okay, with the motion and the second, would you set the vote? Palma? Neil, good job. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, move on to number H, consideration of approving the two percent cost of living adjustment COLA for town employees effective January sixth, twenty nineteen. Employees, that sounds exciting. Larry, you have any comments?
Sure do. Mayor and council, we talked about this at work study. As you are well aware, this was an action that we really had intended to budget for during our regular budget process. But we ended up losing the revenue from a big box store that has closed. And so that gave us a bit of a conservative streak, wanting to know how that was going to impact our total sales tax collection. And we had some concerns. Well, here we are getting into the new fiscal year and quite a ways into it now. And we are discovering that the closure of that large box store did in fact not negatively impact our sales tax collection. Based on the conservative projection that we made, we're exceeding that. And so in this environment, we have been losing some employees. And we want to demonstrate to all of our employees that they are valued and that we fully intend to make sure that their wages keep up with a very competitive marketplace in northern Arizona.
Okay, Laura?
There's two things I wanna say. I wish it were more. I'm sure the whole council wishes it was a more percentage. We're just very relieved to do it. But the most important thing I wanna say, we did have concerns when we were gonna lose a very large tax base. And I wanna thank our citizens because they clearly were loyal. They clearly kept a lot of those dollars they were spending there, right here in Prescott Valley. And I don't want anybody to lose sight of that. I'm so proud of our community. I'm proud of our loyal citizens. And I want you, citizens, to take some credit for the fact that we can do this COLA. Because without their faithfulness and staying within our town limits for their purchases, we might not be able to do this, in my opinion only.
Mary?
Yes, you know, Mayor, I just wanna say that our employees are amazing. And they have a heart, a genuine heart, for the job that they do, for the betterment of all this community. You just can't always find a lot of good work ethics anymore. But this town has amazing people and I would not wanna see any of them go somewhere else. And the other thing that's very important is that you have to show people you appreciate them. And it's important to do that, to make them feel like they're of value and these employees are of value. And they have lived here for many years and many of them have been here since we only had those dirt roads that we talk about. So, you know, this is something that we should do and always show appreciation for all of them.
Good. Any other comments? Rick?
Yes, Mayor. This is certainly, just by the standard we set last year, five months overdue. And it's time that we take the action we need to take to fix this now that we know that we can. And I only hope that when we go into the new budget, which we started now, that we find that we're able to come up with more money for them in July. Because the only reason this town sees the success that we see as a town is because of the staff that we have working for us. And we have to recognize that. And one of the ways that we do recognize that is through salary. And we have to be able to recognize that. And I know, we all know that. We're all aware of that. And we want to do that whenever we can. So I'm glad that we're able to do this tonight.
Yody?
We went through an economic downturn around a decade ago and government does not jump back as quick as the private sector. Certainly, our employees are valued, as Councilwoman Mallory said, and to be able to help make people whole is important. We're seeing that not just here in our town, but in other cities and at the counties around the state and at the state level. We've seen it was huge across the news this past year. We're staying in step with that. We're doing the right thing and this is the right thing at the right time.
Yeah, there come, um. Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to lend my two percent to the, our discussion. But I think I agree with Councilman Rooney that we are still, I think, in a catch-up mode from our great recession. And as we see, I think, a lot of different meetings, we recognize employees have been with us for many, many years. And obviously, compensation is a part of that, but I think their loyalty and the fact that they like to work here. We have a lot of fun as well in terms of things that are done with the employees. So I think this is one way to let them know that they're still valued and that we're serious about catching up in terms of what we lost in the recession. So I think it's about time.
Good. Mighty?
Yeah, just about everything that I was gonna say has been said, but I just wanna repeat that the last few regular council meetings that we've had, we've been giving certificates to people that have, you know, five, ten, fifteen, twenty, and as you saw tonight, twenty-five years with the town. So we have the loyal employees and it's time that we show them the loyalty back and let them get the raises that they deserve and need. The economy keeps changing and, you know, they need to plan for the future, pay the bills and make sure that we have, you know, that there isn't a reason for them to leave this community and work somewhere else for a higher salary where they probably won't be nearly as happy as where they are here. Thank you.
Good. Any other comments, questions?
May I make a motion?
Certainly.
Motion to approve a two percent cost of living adjustment called a COLA for town employees, and here's the important part, effective January sixth, twenty nineteen.
I'd like to second. Thank you. I'd like to second that.
Got the motion and the second. Would you set the vote?
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you. I wanna congratulate, thank you, thank the council for that. We're gonna do number ten comments from the public and tonight it'll be Laura that'll read that.
Thank you, Mayor. A consideration and discussion of general unscheduled comments thrown in the public. Those wishing to address the council need not request permission in advance. Any such remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any member thereof. Such remarks shall be limited to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. At the conclusion of the unscheduled comments, individual members of the council may respond to the item addressed at the discretion of the mayor or they may ask the town manager to review the matter or ask that the matter be placed on a future agenda.
Anyone from the public here to comment? Yes, sir, come on up. Good to see you again. Come on up. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mayor and council members, good evening. My name is Gifford Rodine. As you may remember, a presentation was made to the town council on October twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen that summarized the petition that was signed by citizen residents of the viewpoint.
If you'll talk a little closer to the microphone.
Pardon?
Talk a little closer to the microphone.
Pardon me. Copies of the signed petitions have now been left with the town clerk. If you would like a copy to review, you can please request them from the town clerk. A previous presentation of a, a copy of the presentation was given to the town clerk. If you have been given a copy of the presentation and have questions concerning the presentations, please let me know. The presentation was given to the town council, was also given to the Planning and Zoning Commission on November fifth, two thousand and eighteen. It was received as a matter of record. It should be noted that the signers of the petition were citizens that pay taxes, that pay your salary and expenses. As such, they should be your first priority. You are to be thanked for your, thanked for your consideration on this matter and are expected to have respect for the citizens that have signed the petition. And she has them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other comments from the public? If not, then we have one question. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Hey, that's good to see you. Come on up.
Mayor Scoog? Rest of the council. Bear with me. I'm a little bit nervous about this.
You know, we're always nervous too, so don't feel bad.
Well, this is about the Citizens Academy. And Mary and I just moved here in January. And we moved, I was a native San Diegan, seventy-six years, very, very hard to move. I didn't know what I was getting into when we came here, except we liked what we saw when we initially came over. So driving down the road, the first building I really saw was this building and I thought, what's that? But having been in it now a number of times, I can see how well planned it was and it goes along with this community. All right? So we came over to explore here. We were trying to find a classroom and made a wrong turn off the elevator and got into the mayor's office. We didn't get arrested. Nobody called the police or anything. And there was a very nice lady at the desk and she told us where the room we were looking for it was. And she said, have you been here long? And we said, no, we're just trying to get to know the town. And she says, well, why don't you try the Citizens Academy? You'll learn all about it. So I didn't really wanna say no to the lady because she was so polite, but so, okay, we signed up. But did not know we were getting into. Well, it's been great. And the first night was the Larry show.
Yes.
But you know, he is so proud of what he's done here. And I, what did I hear tonight about the dirt roads? You know, and the cloud of dust and the no sewers and the whole thing. And what you people have done here, and he shows it all. And we peppered him throughout that, that class, throughout that, the whole academy, every week, Larry was getting peppered with something. You know, and he showed us his authority. He had an answer for everything. It was really right on spot. But he's got a lot of compassion, too. We had a discussion about not building walls around the community here. He's got a lot of compassion. You all do. What you have built here is so important. And now that we are here and have seen what you have, we really appreciate what you've done. And Mayor Scoog, thank you so much for what you've done and all the rest of you. We're proud to be here.
Well, thank you. It's good people like you that make it work. Any other comments? There we are. Chief? Who is that guy?
Thank you, Mayor, council. I just wanted to tell everybody about an event we're having Monday night. It's a town hall symposium on the opioid epidemic that we're experiencing. We are not immune to that here in Prescott Valley, as evidenced by some recent events. And so we're asking the public, whoever has concerns about this, to come to the symposium. They can hear from different experts on the opioid epidemic and the overdoses that we're experiencing. And let's work together to try to fix this problem. It's a real problem that needs to be addressed. It'll be here at the library at six P M. on Monday night.
Here or upstairs?
No, in the council chambers, council chambers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Chief.
At what time?
6:00 PM.
All right. Any other comments? If not, then we have to move to a final item, which is an adjournment, and we need a motion or a motion or a demotion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Anyone make a second to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second.
We're all going to second.
Two seconds, would you set that?
Hate to leave. I don't want to go.
Yeah.
I'll be right back. Counselmember Whiting?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
That's a surprise. Thank you so much, Palma. Appreciate that.